Good evening and welcome to the May 21st, 2018, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And one housekeeping item I always forget, student representative Chris Puzzo is excused from tonight's meeting, and we hope he feels much better soon. On to item number two, which is public participation. Anyone that would like to speak in public participation, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you're a student, just first name and grade will be sufficient. Seeing them, we will close public participation. Item number three is the formal acceptance of board member Michael Thompson's resignation from the board and the process utilized to fill the position. On Thursday, May 10th, we received a letter from Mike Thompson informing us that he has decided for his family to resign from the board. He will be relocating out of town and wanted to give this board the opportunity to find a suitable replacement and time to do that before the summer months came in regards to our business. So, we thank him for his consideration for that, knowing he had the plan to do so. So with that, we are now going to have to fill a vacancy on this board. So with that, we are going to follow chapter 197 of the Title IX Education Regulations. It's 15. Wow, I am so bad, thank you so much. I am so bad at Roman numerals, sorry. Even my Super Bowls, I get them wrong. So on that, thank you. So we will be following that protocol to backfill the vacancy. And with that, we need to get a timeframe together. So the position will be from the time that we place a new member to April 2019, which is our next election. So it'll just be the one-year remainder of Mike Thompson's term. He would have expired in 2019 anyway, and then the position will be up for a three-year reelection. So if interested, definitely send a letter of intent to me as the school board chair by June 4th, 2018, and we will interview and select a new board member. So I chose that date, and I hope it does work for the board. We wanted to make sure we had two full weeks, and with the holiday, that's why we extended it to the end of the day on the 4th to make up for that Memorial Day holiday where people may be not really focusing on that. Cindy?
So for the letter, would it need to be postmarked if it was mailed by that date? How do we handle that? Or does it have to be received by that date? Or if they wanted to drop it off in person, would they bring it to the superintendent's office?
If they wanted to bring it in person, they could send it to the superintendent's office. If they wanted to postmark it by the 4th, then we had it by the 6th. We need to schedule a meeting to interview those candidates and reach out to be able to schedule them. And then, we obviously will do the same thing we did the last time we had a vacancy, have a night of interviews, have a panel interview with the candidates, and then deliberate and vote. So on that, is June 4th suitable for everyone to have a deadline? And then from there, they can also email me at shannon.barnes@sa26.org if that's the most convenient, and for a lot of people that is. On top of that, interviews, there are a couple of dates in mind. I know that's, I believe there's a rest board meeting as well, so we've tried to keep those kind of things in mind. Are you available the 12th or the 14th of June? Yeah, Naomi?
Thursdays are out for me for the next six weeks.
Okay. So the 12th is looking better. Is the 12th good for everyone? Excellent. So what we'll do is we'll do interviews on the 12th, and I will invite the school district clerk to attend. She's very good at knitting, and she did that the last time, because she got almost scarfed on. And we will have her swear in, who we have voted to select as the new candidate, as long as a majority is obtained. Andy?
Can we take what you just described and put some sort of posting on the district website so people understand where, you know, what the deadlines are, where to send it to, and stuff like that? That'd be good.
Absolutely, well.
Great, thanks.
Definitely that's the plan. I think we're also probably going to post it the way we post any meeting and in the paper.
Good, thanks.
So this is the first announcement of the timeline, so as long as it works for everyone, that's what we'll do. Cindy?
Sorry for the question. Does it have to be by letter, or could it be by email?
Email would be fine.
To your district email address?
To my district email address, please. A Facebook private message would not really qualify, so, but an email to the district would be fine. Excellent. So with that, we have a timeline in place, and with that timeline, I think there's a couple of benefits. We'll have them in place for our next, our second school board meeting, which is the last meeting of the school year. And then also, if they are so inclined and available, they could attend as the fifth board member at graduation. So I think that's a nice benefit for them. Excellent, so we are good there. And now we're on to the highlights of the night, which are much, much more engaging than what we just did. And so we will go on to item number four, which is the focus on Merrimack High School. I invite to the table administrators, educators, and students. And Ken, I will have you frame up the, frame up the night's happenings. Thank you and welcome, everyone.
And thank you, it's always a pleasure to serve before the board. Well, we have a two-part presentation tonight. Yes, it is. It is, Andy.
Well, that one, we had some problems where one of the mics was live and one was dead for a while. So we were just making sure that you're good.
Loud and clear, very good.
You are.
But we have a two-part presentation tonight that I'm really excited about, because the first part is like a wonderful current event. We have great news out of Colorado. You may or may not be aware that our Science Olympiad team made the Nationals, and with us tonight, we have department chair James Davis, along with our new coach Tyler Galima, who's also a former student. They have two students with them, and they're going to come up and present to you tonight with some pretty astonishing news. So, gentlemen, if you would.
Thank you for having us tonight. Like Ken said, I'm James Davis, I'm the department head for the science department. Let me first introduce you to kind of what Science Olympiad is. It's a nationwide competition for both high school and middle school-aged children. It started in the Midwest in 1984, and it's now spread nationwide. This year was the, Vermont became the final state to buy into the program. So that was great. You know, Science Olympiad in the Midwest is basically like First Robotics is here, so it's a really big deal in the Midwest, and it, just like I said, spread from there. Nationwide, 7,600 teams participate in this, so it's a very big program. Each team consists of 15 students with a maximum of seven seniors, and it doesn't matter the other grade levels. Overall, they compete in 23 separate events in teams of two or three people, and the topics, you know, it's a true kind of STEM program. The topics include physics, chemistry, biology, engineering, there's also building events. It's a game of all rules. They kind of give you a rulebook, and you have to adhere to those guidelines, and if you step out of those guidelines, you're, you know, tiered down, or you lose points and things like that. So it's really about reading those rules and following it. Students prepare basically all year for this event. You know, we start more or less in September. The kids get assigned their events, and then they go from there. A lot of schools in New Hampshire and New England are starting to do this a lot more to attend invitational tournaments, so they don't really count towards getting you to the national competition, but their practice. So this year, we traveled to University of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia. We went to the MIT tournament, and we went to Dartmouth. Were the three that we attended. So that was even before our state competition. All states have at least one state competition, bigger states have a regional competition and then a state competition. If you win the state competition, then you get to go to the national competition, which is a different place every year. So we won the state tournament this year, so we got to go to the Nationals. 60 teams compete at Nationals, so 41 states have sent one team, District of Columbia sends one team, and nine states send two teams. So Sean Mueller, who's back there, he started the team in 2008. Since then, we've had anywhere from one to four teams, so we're talking about 15 to 60 kids participate. We've gone eight, nine out of the last 10 years, we've made the national competition. So the first year, we won, you know, we entered about a month before it, and we won by one point, which made everybody very mad. And we got to go to Georgia for the competition, and then it just kind of took off from there, and the team's kind of grown since then. So we've gone to the national competition in Florida twice, Ohio twice, Nebraska, Illinois, Wisconsin, and then this year was Colorado. You know, when we first started, the trips were all funded basically by the students, and then we kind of developed a booster club, and the booster club helped us do fundraisers, so the students have washed a lot of cars, and we've gotten a lot of donations that way, which is really awesome, from the town, a lot of support. From then, the booster club's been great. Over the last couple of years, the district funding for that has been unbelievable, so I thank you guys for that. They basically flew, the kids paid, how much this year? $350?
$300.
$300 for the trip to Colorado, which is really, really great. So, you know, we've been coached, myself, I've been the coach, Sean Mueller, Dr. Sarah Campbell, Trey Sleeper, and Mary Alice Corliss have all coached. But due to situations at the school this year, we had to kind of turn it over to Tyler halfway through the year. You know, he's a former student that's gone through the program, and we're thrilled to have him as our new coach, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. So I'm going to start way back in eighth grade at the high school club day, when a bunch of the different clubs came to the middle school to talk about themselves. My eighth-grade math teacher decided to grab me by the hand, along with one other student, drag us over, and say, "Look, they need your brains." And that began this wonderful journey. I, along with that other student, were the first two students to be on the team for four years, and I was the first to compete at Nationals for four years. In my time on the team, I competed in a very vast, different set of events, ranging from astronomy to dynamic planet, which is earth science, fossils, astronomy, and my personal favorite, forestry, where my senior year, I placed ninth at the national competition. Science Olympiad is a very important program to me personally. If it wasn't for Science Olympiad, I probably wouldn't have gone into engineering. After graduating from Merrimack High School in 2013, I attended Worcester Polytechnic Institute, from which I graduated just last May with a degree in mechanical engineering and a minor in Spanish. Science Olympiad allows for students to study different STEM topics that aren't covered in the normal education in the science department: astronomy, high-level physics, water quality, some different examples. These students also get to use, have direct application of the scientific method and use of important study skills. Students are teaching themselves college-level courses for these events. For an example, this year, we had two students compete in event Wi-Fi Lab, where they had to build a Wi-Fi antenna with very, very specific parameters, being size, no use of electricity, and then they also had to take a test on the high-level physics involved in how Wi-Fi works. We'll talk about that event a little bit more later. And then also, Science Olympiad is great for students at looking at colleges. As Mr. Davis mentioned before, we go to vast majority, vast difference of colleges for invitationals and the national tournaments, varying in size, urban setting, and location. Another wonderful opportunity that Science Olympiad allows students is that through these events, students can set up an independent study course with a teacher in the science department. I did that my senior year with Dr. Sarah Campbell. I studied forestry. I sat down in a chair and studied 152 different species of trees for an hour a day with some inter, I added some of my other events sometimes, because, you know, trees can get a little boring sometimes. But, you know, it paid off in the end. My goal was top 10, and I got ninth. I was a little shy of making the podium myself, but, you know, not everybody gets to do that. It's very difficult to place in the national level. So anyone that ever does, it is an extreme accomplishment, and the team has had that happen a couple times over its history, with some students making the podium twice in one competition at Nationals. States, on the other hand, it's a little easier for us to sweep some medals. So, a lot has changed since I left the team in 2013. It was interesting to come back, and it's very odd seeing the program from the other side. I'm no longer just stressed about my four events, I'm stressed about all 23. In my time, four months so far with the team, I've brought back a lot of different traditions, playing certain games before award ceremonies that bring us good luck, taking the captains out to pizza so we can get meetings planned, and just overall bringing fun back to science. We've seen a lot more students interested in joining the team, and some students that have left in the past couple of years interested in coming back next year because of this. And at the heart of it all are the students. This is a student-run organization. The captains, sitting to my left, are the ones that make the decisions, and I have to dissent sometimes, but for the most part, they've done a very good job in running this program with me this year. Everything from team and event placement to meeting topics, it's up to them. Students have been happier, and performance has increased since I've started coaching the team, and it's shown in our competitions. We won the state competition scoring 83 points, sorry, 89. It's like golf, so whatever places we get in the events, they add those together. In the 22 events that they ran at States, we placed in the top 10 in all but one, which is the best we've done since my senior year. Moving forward, I do have a couple plans. There is a middle school team, and I would like for our team to work with them a lot more in a sort of middle school ambassador program. The National Science Olympiad rules allow for five ninth graders to compete at the middle school level, because some school districts have ninth grade in their middle schools. So I would like to see five of my students next year, who are freshmen, to go back and work with both the students on the middle school team and with the high school team. They will be coming to the meetings, and then we will also be sending our high schoolers in higher grades back to work with students in similar events, which allows both sides to learn better. And then it's not just on the middle school side of things, I'm also working with the alumni. I have been in contact with about 50 different students who have been in the program in the past, looking to see who would like to come back and help work with the students, teaching about events they were in, or even if they weren't in an event and had college courses on it. I've had students submit different notes and PowerPoints from their anatomy and physiology courses. Science Olympiad is something that I know from me and quite a few other people, really helped them form who they are today, and they're willing to give back. So, a little bit more about this year's experience, we'll pass it over to the two captains.
So I can mainly start off by giving my experience in Science Olympiad, and it all began in seventh grade, actually, when I got an invitation to join. The team was not like how it was this year. It's mainly been, it was like a group of seven, eight kids when I joined, and it was all two events. I chose to put together a piece of styrofoam, wood, glue magnets to the bottom, and see how fast I could get it to race across a track. That's called MagLiv. And by the end of the year, it actually worked out pretty well. In the beginning, I wasn't really motivated or interested in pursuing science, but by the end of that, it seemed kind of interesting, so I joined again in eighth grade, and that's actually when Josh joined as well. So we did the same event again, not really any change, because the team wasn't really put together well back then, but it is now. And we did even, even better, I think, eighth grade. It was, it was fun, though, and it, it was, it made a lot of memories. So going into ninth grade, I was really nervous, really overwhelmed. I didn't really think about joining the team in the first place, but after my cross-country season kind of ended, I figured I would try it again, just because physical science had seemed a little bit more interesting, and I'm like, oh, science seems a little bit more fun now, so I'll give it a shot. And I joined. My first build event in high school was bungee drop, and what that event basically is, is you have, you're given a specific height and a specific mass of a water bottle emptied, you fill it up, and you need to drop it from whatever height they give you and get it as close to the ground as possible without hitting it. I'm pretty sure getting hit, like, got you. You weren't going to win if you hit the ground. I'll just say that. And we got fourth place at States that year. Physical science seemed like a breeze with the help of this. And so going over to junior year, I entered into electric vehicle, which was basically the same concept as MagLiv. You need to try to get the car to go as fast as you can, a certain distance that you're given, and they even made it a little bit more crazy, and you have to try to get it to curve around cans, but nobody tried that. That ended up, I placed in the top 10 at a couple invitationals, like MIT, Cornell, and it just shows like my progression in building over time, because my first build back in middle school wasn't too good. But over time, you learn these skills to build, and at the same time, you're taking test events where you can learn to study, and it's actually improved my studying strategies over the high school course. And my senior year, I was, I was having a much easier time than I would have in AP Chem and AP Physics, studying for those tests, than if I didn't do it. And senior year, I'll make this really brief, I had a Gold Ruberg, Gold, Gold Ruberg machine to build, it's called Mission Possible. They give you 12 separate tasks to do, most of them are impossible, even though it's called Mission Possible. And you try to get as much of it to work as possible. You need to, you have a certain amount of time to finish all the tasks in, you have timers to adjust what you can finish and what you can't, and I ended up getting second place in that at the state competition. So huge improvement between that and the build I had back in middle school. And then I went on to Nationals with that, I built a thermos along with that, too, but it just shows like the improvement with that, as well as studying for my AP classes, and it's, I'm, I'm going into civil engineering now at UNH, mainly because of Science Olympiad. It's just been a core piece of my life, and I would not regret joining that in the first place.
So I guess introduction, that's Jordan right there. I'm Josh, we're both outgoing seniors at Merrimack, and yeah, kind of just piggybacking off what he said, I, starting in like middle school, I like, I was kind of interested in science, but for the most part, I was a humanities kid. And then my seventh-grade science teacher was like, "You're doing this?" I ended up not doing it in seventh grade, but I joined eighth grade with Jordan, and that was a fun year, MagLiv was an experience. But going into freshman year, I started taking the science classes again, actually, Mr. Davis was my freshman science teacher, and I was like, "I'm enjoying this a lot, so I'll give Science Olympiad a shot." So we joined, and it's been a roller coaster since then, safe to say. Yeah, it's just personally, like freshman year was a lot of fun, meeting these seniors who seemed like they had their life figured out. They were these titans of just like intelligence that you looked up to and wanted to have the grasp of these concepts that they had. And being the little freshman we were, we got to work with them very closely, which was an awesome learning experience, just having these people to look up to and admire. And it really started teaching me what STEM was outside of just high school level and middle school level science class I'd taken. It showed me a whole new world of opportunities, and I'd say that, like, just the experience and just like talents I've learned from Science Olympiad have helped me as a student, helped my work ethic, my dedication, and just my ability to engage with all different sorts of information. Sophomore year, through some things, I wasn't able to finish off the year, just like with some conflicts I had, and which I kind of regret in the end, but I rejoined again junior year, and me and Jordan had more leadership opportunities as juniors. And the team was a lot of fun, but it was missing some of the passion that we'd seen. And going into senior year, me and Jordan became captains, and we had a lot of really great plans we wanted to do. Just with the change in leadership that we had the middle of the year, it was a bit turbulent at times, but we got Tyler in, and we started really being able to double down on the things we wanted to do with the team. And I can safely say, I've never seen the team as passionate, dedicated, and engaged as I see them now. And just the potential that the club has to grow even more in the future is something that's very important. New Hampshire's a small state, and the titans of, that you compete with, like at Ohio and California, have all these high-placing teams, can be very intimidating, but I think that in the very near future, New Hampshire will be, become one of those teams with the passion that people have. Just personally, exploring the different topics I've had in Science Olympiad, from physics, engineering, chemistry, biology, has helped me decide what I want to do with my life. I want to go into physics because of the lessons I've learned in Science Olympiad and the new fields I've been exposed to. I, as, I have a better understanding of college, college-level classes, college-level life, just from the people I've talked to and the places I've been with Science Olympiad, and I know that that's true for a lot of our younger kids. After being at Colorado, I talked to several younger kids in the team that said they were really interested in the school, and so people might end up at the school of their dreams because they were exposed to it at Science Olympiad, and that's not something to dismiss out of hand. So yeah, Science Olympiad is an amazing opportunity for growth. Yeah, so we'll talk, I guess we can talk a bit more about Nationals, which we got back from yesterday, which was fun. Yeah, the time zone shift is still hitting us, but we're getting used to that. Yeah, so Nationals, like they said, was very, very competitive. These are the best teams in the country, they work hard, they fight, they have an uphill battle to get there, and we did as well, but we won States and we got to Nationals.
Our essential goal was to do better than last year, which was 53rd place out of 60.
And we did do better.
We got 50th.
We got 50th. And again, the fact that we were able to pull that off with all the changes that's happened to the team this year was very impressive. And looking at the event that Tyler mentioned before, the Wi-Fi Lab, the two alternates that we brought that competed in this event got first place at that competition, out of the country. And that's just an example of the things that people on this team can accomplish, and in the future, we'll be having even more Merrimack kids up on that podium, I guarantee it. And also, in addition to people winning first place in things, our very own Tyler Galima won the coaches' award, out of all the coaches in the country. There were two awards, but he got the number one, so, don't be humbled.
Tyler definitely deserved it the most, and I just want to thank him and Mr. Davis for all the work that they put in this year. We definitely couldn't have gotten to where we were without the two of you guys.
This club lives on, dyes on the support that the science teachers in the school give us, that our coach gives, that the booster club, the school board, that everyone gives to these students to empower them and help them pursue these careers that they want in the future and these opportunities, and just a big thank you to everyone who's helped us develop into the people we are today and helped us get the tools that we needed to become the people we want to be in the future. So that's what Science Olympiad's given to me, Jordan can say the same, and there's countless people that can say the same thing, so.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much. Pass the mic over.
Are there questions about the Science Olympiad team, competition, et cetera?
I'm attending the University of Connecticut next year in the Honish program.
UNH, yeah.
He said UNH, okay, we're good. I'm planning on studying astrophysics, so.
Oh, astrophysics, wow. Marge?
So I want to thank you, Tyler, for being a graduate of Merrimack High School and coming back to work with students. I don't think there's anyone better than, who's gone through the program and actually knows what needs to be done, so I commend you for that. And for wanting to bridge the middle school to the high school, because one of the things that we've learned is anytime a high school student goes and speaks with middle school students, there is an automatic connection, and something really good usually happens from that. So the fact that you realize the significance of the bridge is really, really important. And then for the two of you, the fact that you've taken everything that you've amassed over your time, and it's turning out to end up being where your career is going to go, is really as good as it gets, and that's what we talk about all the time, but you've expressed it so well tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I have to say that the Science Olympiad team and all of our co-curriculars, but you are, you are here and you are showing the greatness that the school really does provide our students. And more so than that, we, I think the culture, the Merrimack way of doing things, when you go out there, you are great ambassadors for us. So we thank you for making Merrimack such a spectacular brand in the, in the science space for us, and you did a wonderful job, we're very proud of you back here, and congratulations.
Thank you guys, thank you very much. What a great group.
Oh, absolutely.
I also want to thank Marge, the way you put together the agenda with the board, and you talked about our interdisciplinary courses, what benefits we derive, and that's, that's my segue into a brief introduction. The idea behind the interdisciplinary initiative was first to offer teachers from different disciplines and departments the opportunity to collaborate with one another and develop new, interesting, and challenging courses. Second, our goal was that through this unique course of study, students would be inspired to use inquiry, to make connections, to construct knowledge for themselves, to think creatively when problem-solving, and to find relevance in their intellectual pursuits. And so tonight, I introduce you to some of those teachers who spearheaded this curriculum initiative, along with a few students who will speak to you briefly about initiative, along with a few students, who will speak to you briefly about how these teachers and how these courses impacted their thinking and their perspectives. We will also introduce you to a new course of study for 2018, 19 academic year. And so I'm going to begin with Lindsay Seibert and Carolyn Johnson. If you would come forward.
As Ken said, as Mr. Johnson said, three years ago, we began this adventure into interdisciplinary land. And this particular course that we're going to talk about was, is a World Civilizations and Literature course. It began at the 10th grade level with the World Studies at that time, three years ago, was the course that was at the sophomore level. And then, then it moved the following year. So Mrs. Seibert and I decided to, with the help of our department heads, we thought it would be a great adventure to offer to our incoming freshmen in the honors program. So we started last year, we had forty-four students. This year, we had thirty-two. Next year, we will have another forty-four students. It has just been an, an amazing adventure for me personally as a teacher, to be blessed to work with these amazing kids. This particular class is the end of the day, seventh and eighth period, and they come every day just so enthusiastic and ready to go for ninety minutes, five days a week. I would say Mrs. Seibert's course, the World Studies, is the driving force. She's driving the car and I am in the passenger seat. And I like to, she presents the history and I like to make it come alive through our literature and drama and novels and short stories and writing. And so as a pair, it just seems to work really well. But I don't want to take up any time because I know that after Mrs. Seibert says a few things, we have two great students with us today, Rohan and Chloe, that are going to speak to it.
Okay. All right. So when Carolyn and I first started this class, we realized that with ninety minutes, we could either cover a ton of content and a lot of history, which was very exciting to me, or we could really get the students more interested and allow them to really answer these questions and show us the talents they have. So we naturally moved towards this inquiry-based model. We decided that for every unit we have, they're going to have some sort of inquiry-based project where they take all the information we've taught them and they create something with it, or they solve a problem with it. And we've just had wonderful results with it for actually all three years that we have done it. It has really allowed us to also, especially with this current group we have, enhance their discussion skills. These students love to ask questions, hundreds of questions and very on-topic questions. But it's really nice to see the connections they are making and to see them grow those discussion and debate skills, which they'll be able to use in the future. So we also have really modeled our class to allow students to work collaboratively, another important skill that they will be needing in college and further on in the workforce. So our two students are going to talk about two of our inquiry projects, which they did have to do collaboratively. So Chloe, why don't you start us off?
Is it lit up? There you go. There you go.
Hi, I'm Chloe. And so what I really like about this class is we do get to do a lot of like interaction and there's a lot of collaboration, and that's a lot more than we do in my normal classes. And we get to like learn how to build like those group work skills and like reason with each other, get things done. And it's a really interesting mix of literature and history. So one of the projects we did was Medieval Land, where we marketed a amusement park where we had to incorporate our medieval, what we'd learned in our medieval period into an amusement park with like a lot of like, there's stuff we had to do. You know? So the ninety-minute, five-days-a-week thing really works for this because we could create and plan in class. There wasn't a lot of out-of-school collaboration needed. And our group partners had time to actively contribute ideas and critiques. So it was a really good program and it was a really good project and it worked really well for us. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rohan Srinivasan. As, as Chloe said, we do work very well together in this class. Also, the scheduling works out really well with two different classes. The, the ninety minutes and five days a week works out well for students. And that's, that's because we're able to come into class, settle down, and start learning for the full period of time. And well, since we have it every single day, we kind of get the streamline of information throughout the week that works very well for us. Another project we did was World War I memorials, in which Mrs. Seibert actually gave us the information for, about World War I. And then we got to do the creative thinking about how we would design a World War I memorial. And this kind of works out because we're presented with the information and then we're able to creatively apply that to a practical situation, such as actually designing a World War I model. And as you can see, there's multiple designs up there that provide different ideas for models of World War I memorials. And we're, we work in a group setting, so in this class, rather than other classes, we get the opportunity to work with fellow peers more than any other class. And that builds the social skills that are used later in life and are very important that we can't really get in any of our other classes.
Are there questions from the board on the interdisciplinary humanities class? No? So far, so good. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
My name is Naomi Halverson. I'm a member of the English Department at Merrimack High School. I'm here tonight with Lucas Woods, my co-teacher, who is a member of the Social Studies Department, and then our student Nick Sherman, who will be speaking to you briefly about the experiences in our interdisciplinary course, which is titled The American Experience. So this is offered junior year. This year, we have it as an honors level. And it combines American literature and US history together. So what we really wanted to share with you tonight was how Lucas and I, our philosophy shaped the course. We've taught it since its inception three years ago. And we had two main questions that we focused on, which were how can we authentically mix our literature, US literature with history? And then how can learning be an experience for our students? So tonight, we're just going to share with you two different units in which we explored those questions and, and turned them into reality.
And really by focusing on the word experience in this class, we really asked the kids to move, you know, beyond just simply the facts of the situation and the events and, you know, the whos and the hows, you know, and the wheres, and really focus on the whys and, you know, the, the truth and the emotion of the situation and of the historical event. And what we do, and I, personally, you know, when we try to explore what human elements and human conditions impact these events that have shaped our history, I can't think of a better place than to look at our literature and other art forms. And that's what this course does so well in blending. And each unit that we have, that we develop, is tethered to a particular, you know, text. In this case, the one that's up here is The Devil in the White City, which really dives into and explores the, the development and implementation of the World's Fair in 1893 and, and also another story about the country's first serial killer. But with that aside, which is, the students really, really enjoy, but what we do is by emphasizing on the experience, we ask the kids to take the information that we presented to them, read the text, and actually go and come up with and construct a World Fair on their own and, and figure out the challenges that society was facing at that particular time. And they emphasize an invention or some sort of technological achievement. And they created a booth and they created a display. And we actually had a lot of kids from the middle school and upper elementary school come in to experience the fair on their own. And we had the high school kids interact and, and engage with the, with the middle schoolers and, and the upper elementary. And it was just, it was really cool to see and it was a really fun activity to plan and see the kids succeed so well at. So with that, Nick is going to talk a little bit about the fair.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. My name is Nicholas Sherman, as Mr. Woods said. So the World's Fair was probably not only the single greatest project that we did in this class, but it's been the best project I've ever done in my entire school career. It really gave me an insight into what was going on in that time period. And it gave me like, it gave me a fantastic experience, especially on my end. I aspire to be a future roller coaster engineer, thrill ride engineer. Yeah, odd, odd job.
Someone's got to do it, right?
Yeah, there you go. And lo and behold, the first ever Ferris wheel was showcased at the World's Fair. And when I found that out, I nearly jumped out of my seat with excitement to do this project. And it was very insightful, not only to see what was like, what was going on with the whole fair, especially through the text of Devil in the White City, but I learned things I never would have known about creating things such as the Ferris wheel and how, what challenges he went through. And it was really just a valuable experience for me to learn things that I never would have thought of before engineering this, so. We also, as Mr. Woods said, we had students come from all of the schools in the district, more so from the middle school, the Gateway Program, as they are coming up to the high school. That was more of a connection. And it was really, really amazing to give all this information that we learned to all these little kids and to see them light up, more with the fact that I had a nine-foot connects Ferris wheel, but they, they still enjoyed going around and learning all the information. But because he's sitting here, I can't go without saying, I'd like to personally thank Dr. McLaughlin. He came by during our lunch period and he was the best visitor I had at my Ferris wheel exhibit, asking me such in-depth questions and really being engaged. And it was so refreshing to have someone come up and be interested in the facts and George Ferris's struggles, not just, whoa, a nine-foot connects Ferris wheel, cool! But it was, it was still amazing to give all these kids just an experience they never forget. And according to Ms. Alves and Mr. Woods, whenever they talk about the high school at any of the lower, the lower schools, this is one of the experiences that is constantly brought up time and time again, even though it's the second time we've done it.
So one other unit we designed was called The Bomb to Boom to Bust, which covers the historical time period of basically World War I, the roaring twenties, and the Great Depression, which we paired with literature such as a graphic novel Harlem Hellfighters by Max Brooks and classics like The Great Gatsby and Of Scott, by Of Scott Fitzgerald and Of Mice and Men by John Steinbeck. Our anchor experience with this was to invite the students to create their own graphic novel publications featuring the history of nineteen twenties America. So we took, you know, a, a genre which we studied in depth during our, our time in the classroom and then asked the students to turn it around and to see what it would be like to make those choices and to produce their own graphic novels with some historical content. So Nick's going to just briefly speak about that experience as well.
So we, we were, we were asked to create a graphic novel based on events from that time period. Each group had a certain aspect of the nineteen twenties to focus on, such as recreation, geopolitics, politics, and the local area, experiences like that. And I thought it was a very creative approach on it. I kind of crippled when they first said it because I am not an art person. But it was really, it was an interesting experience to try and figure out, you know, I had, I had geopolitics. And so I'm like, how am I going to put the relation, the foreign relations of the US in the nineteen twenties into a graphic novel? And it really helped me to think about, well, what, what was going on, how, how to do this? And it helped me to understand even more just what was going on and the struggles they had and the, the events of the time period.
So one kind of, one last thing in regards to interdisciplinary. I know that inquiry-based has been, you know, has been a key initiative and really a top priority for this district for the past few years and rightfully so. So it's just really nice to, to teach and work in a district who not only, you know, highly encourages, but really highly supports a model that in my opinion, you know, is designed for inquiry-based, student-centered instruction. And so we, we really appreciate it. We really appreciate the opportunity to construct courses in this manner. We really enjoy kind of providing and developing a very unique experience, there's that word again, but a very unique, you know, a different classroom than the kids are normally accustomed to. So I just want to say thank you very much for that because it's, it's a great tool for the, for the kids to have. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the board? Actually, we have one. We have a live one.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem. Cindy, go ahead.
It's actually more of a comment, I think, as, you know, I know we're not finished discussing the interdisciplinary, but I will say I've been a member on the PERC Committee that when these things come up and they emerge, and I can't emphasize enough how much I love them. And when I hear about these classes, including the ones that I've already heard about tonight and I know, and the ones I'm yet to hear about tonight, they're so often, so often the time that I just feel like I want to go back to school and be a student again. Because, you know, and I think that what you said said it best, I'm not an art person. Well, I think that's the greatest benefit of these classes is it allows you to complement these studies to be able to teach a variety of different subjects and explore a variety of different, of traditional subjects through that context. And being able to use the different, to bring not only your experiences together, teaching and your backgrounds from teaching, in a way to facilitate that, but to be able to provide that content and be able to build on it and look for those patterns, comparisons, what would it be like? And really putting yourself in that spot, I think is really great. And so I'm really support, supportive of the interdisciplinary classes that we have and I appreciate you coming and telling us all about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Matthew O'Brien and this is Ms. Higgins. And we have with us Bryce Porter and Catherine Doubleday. And we teach the other section of The American Experience. And today, we wanted to come in and talk about one particular lesson that we felt really benefited from our class and was able to really emphasize what we strove, strove to teach all our students this year. And what I think is so amazing about this class is that it allows both Ms. Higgins and I to just go off with our passions. We're able to teach what we love and incorporate it into a subject of America, which we both have enjoyed doing this entire year. All the way from the founding and framing down to the Israeli-Palestine debate going on still, we've covered the whole spectrum this year. And what lesson we wanted to bring together was, we decided to teach a graphic novel called Marvel Civil War, which is the, you know, standard superheroes, Captain America, Iron Man, Spider-Man. And what it brought them together was over a conflict where there's a national tragedy and the government says all superheroes must register themselves with the government, unmask themselves and decide to basically give themselves up. And that splits Captain America and Iron Man right down the middle, to they're on two different sides of this debate, and they put Spider-Man smack dab in the middle of it and trying to pull him to sway him over. And over the course of this, you find out that once individuals can no longer express their ideologies peacefully, they start to go into violence. And so these two characters, these heroes are fighting each other with, along with the rest of the Marvel Universe. It's every character you've ever heard of in the Marvel world going together to fight. And at the end of this conflict, it's not resolved, as most conflicts are when you disagree, is that you're not going to come to a solution right away that you necessarily agree with. And there's one line that really drove our course that when at the end of this, Captain America, he's, he's winning, he's beating everybody up, he's using his shield, he's throwing it around, bouncing it off places. Spider-Man, you know, says, you know, hey, we're winning. And he says, no, cease, we're, we're going to stop. He's like, we're, we're winning. And he says everything but the argument. And that's what really drove this, you know, this debate where now in our classroom, we're able to have a conversation that the students can tie everything that we've talked about into where, as you put the superpowers off to the side and you realize that everyone's a hero, but you have to use language, you have to use communication, and you have to express yourself in a peaceful way, or you're never going to get anything accomplished. And I think with us, what we loved about this course is, a lot of times when you look at a history or literature course, sometimes you just get to see those, those footprints of where we've been, but we wanted our students to hear the American heartbeat. but we wanted our students to hear the American heartbeat. And that's what I think this course was really able to allow us to do, and this lesson was able to really bring that message to our students. So, we're gonna let our students kind of tell their, their perspective on this a little bit, what they, something they got out of this course, but something they got out of this particular lesson that we enjoyed so much.
Hi, so I'm Catherine Doubleday. And so, the American Experience is a great class to collaborate with peers, work on projects, and do group discussions that have to do with America and how our country has evolved over time. Specifically, right now, my class has just finished reading the graphic novel Marvel Civil War. This graphic novel teaches lessons that everyone can learn from and apply to in their lives. One lesson I took away from the reading was, united we stand, divided we fall. Once Captain America and Iron Man disagree about the registration, the Avengers were split apart, and because of this, chaos arose. Lines were drawn which caused relationships to split and a fatality to occur. When the superheroes are not working together, there's no winning, only further destruction. Each side put in so much work for nothing to occur from it. Nobody wins because there's no compromise. This lesson is much like America today, when there's division over differences of race, or differences of genders, or differences of opinions, no one can stand. People can only stand when they work together. Everybody's on the same team. We all want America to be the best it can be, however, there can be no achievements if there's no unity and compromise. Throughout history, America has practiced coming together to form a better nation. This graphic novel is a great recap to what America has gone through to get to the place we are in today. America has always been a balancing act between individual freedom and the common good. Captain America and Iron, Iron Man represent each side of the scale. Captain America is fighting for the hero's right to privacy and going against the government for trying to invade on them. Whereas, Iron Man is looking out for the people and trying to make a more secure country. It's a balancing act between power and security. The way Tony Stark thinks throughout the reading may be logical and good on paper, however, nothing is ever that simple. This is still a problem America faces today, and that's why I think this graphic novel is such an important read in the American Experience class because although it may seem as only a simple comic book with superheroes, the novel has a lot more depth on real-life issues that my peers and I as citizens should be aware of.
Hello, my name is Bryce Porter. And with this comic book, immediately like when I was told we were going to read it, I just kind of thought like, hey, it's something to ease off the year. But it was a lot more than that. It was very in-depth. We had a lot of conversations about the psychology behind what their actions represented, as well as some of the things that were happening in the story, such as the beginning, the, the prelude to the actual story was a devastation of a, an elementary school. And that led to the, the interest, the, the conflict. And it showed two separate sides to a story, as Katie said, where it was a far-left and a far-right. And in-between, as Mr. O'Brien mentioned, is Spider-Man. And seeing Spider-Man is kind of like in relation to the teens of America, where we have to decide on what we actually think and step forward for what we think. And this class has taught me a lot about that, where you actually have to be able to step forward and, and say what you believe and be confident. And having, knowing like that they can do this in the graphic novel and, and like even teachers standing up in front of class every day, you have to be able to say like, "I can do this." And that's one of the, the main things I've taken away from this class, where you can step up and say what you believe and not be judged for what you say because you're trying to be a hero in your own sense.
I'm gonna knock this thing over. So, kind of to wrap this up with our kids, one of the big things we're trying to hone in on is trying to introduce something new, something fresh, something that really, for even as young as we are, we didn't even get to experience as kids. And again, going back to that word, experience. So, if you really were to look at the long-term effects, comic books can help convey historical topics, but also as for these kids, it helps commit, helps to connect and make lessons for them. Through these graphic novels, students can also develop critical reading skills. It really isn't that, it's like really hard. Have you ever read a comic book to go from one frame to another? So, like, these guys had to master that skill to kind of follow the storyline progression, but also writing skills. And we understand comics aren't gonna replace textbooks and your standardized book. We, we understand that. But what it can help do is kind of hook students into tapping into this new genre and captivate them into something that's bigger than them. You guys have any questions for us?
Questions from the board? I think we're good for now. Oh, yes, Mark, absolutely.
So, as a former English teacher, I have to just say that I really, say something else later about everybody, but, but to challenge the status quo, most people expect that an English class is primarily supposed to be Shakespeare and the classics. And to have the courage to try to introduce a different means to provide students with a way to think and understand about their content is a courageous thing to do because it's not self-evident that it would work. And I think for these folks, it wasn't necessarily so. You never know how something's gonna play out until you do it. Otherwise, it's just always theoretical. And it could have been that it wouldn't have worked, and that wouldn't have meant it was a failure. It would have meant that you just would try something else. It happens to have worked. But I just really want to, to credit the students for having the stick-to-it-iveness to work through it and then to see the value, and the teachers for really having the courage to try something a little different. We're not gonna succeed as an educational entity if we keep doing things exactly the way we always did them. So, I really give you credit for branching out and trying something that didn't have an obvious outcome.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you guys very much.
Hello, my name is Mr. Mueller, and I'm a chemistry teacher at the high school. And this is Amy Piccolo, the photography teacher. And we presented a new course for next year called Experimental Photography, which is an interdisciplinary course that will be ninety minutes a day, every day for the, the whole year. And it looks at the natural connections between chemistry and photography and will help students to use chemistry and photography to explore and ask questions about the world around them. When we presented this course, we had a really good, like, reception to it. And when the students enrolled for it, I think we had thirty-eight students enroll for thirty spots. We also brought two students with us that will hopefully be taking the course next year, CJ Terranova and Joanne Bonner. And they've also helped us test some of the stuff that we have planned for next year.
So, in October, when I started really thinking about this and really decided I wanted to do this, I started looking for a co-teacher who would help me celebrate both student accomplishments and kind of failed attempts because I feel like that's one of the best ways we learn as a learner. And it's not always encouraged or appreciated. And I was really looking for a co-teacher who would do that with me. And I was lucky enough to find that right across the hall, which made planning and experimenting and just logistics of our class in general a lot easier. Because we both come with a lot of equipment and stuff. So, so that worked out really well. But what we were really looking is, we wanted to design a class that would allow students to kind of take back ownership of their education and their learning and kind of be responsible and really wanting to learn about what they're looking at and what they're, they're trying to understand. So, we began to write a class that would do just that.
And so, some of the things that we're looking at for next year, because we were kind of different because we haven't actually taught this yet. So, one of the things we're gonna do is a little bit of spectroscopy where students learn how to take this cellphone, that's the bane of every teacher's existence, and turn it into a useful tool that they can use to explore the world around them. So, this is a spectroscopic image that they took with their cellphone.
So, we're looking at kind of exploring very traditional work, just one. Really traditional photography, the chemistry behind how that works. I'm really trying to get them to investigate both the world around them, what they can see and what they cannot see, and then how to use photographic images and photographic concepts to explain what they understand to other people.
And one of the other things, oh, there we go, we're gonna start again. One of the other things that we're gonna do is, is we're gonna use the science behind those techniques to allow students to, they're gonna modify them, they're going to adjust them, they're gonna design their own experiments so that they can answer the topics that they are interested in.
So, we worked really hard at trying to really forge this collaboration, these what seemed to be very not associated or very separate subjects, and really how to blend them together. So, we started doing a lot of research. We began to do all kinds of experiments on our own and forge kind of working relationships with other institutions that would be able to kind of feed us information and give us some resources. So, we forged great relationships with MIT, with Leslie University, with the New Hampshire Institute of Art, and with some independent working artists to kind of help us better understand what we were looking at and what we were trying to understand, and then what we were trying to teach.
And then we asked ourselves, like, how can we teach this? And like, what would make this more, very memorable for the students? And so, we looked at things like inquiry-based and choice-based learning, where students can make the decisions about what they are investigating. We wanted it to be hands-on, minimal lecture. We wanted them, the students, to be responsible for their own learning, designing their processes and, and, and using those to investigate problems that they've generated or that they're interested in.
We're really interested in asking the students like, well, we're looking and reflecting as an individual, how do we learn? And then asking our students, well, how do you learn? And how can we kind of take this concept that's very unheard of, very foreign to them, and try and investigate that and try and better understand how that works?
And one of the biggest things in this is the failures because the stuff that we're gonna be doing, the students will be doing in this class is, is very difficult, and some of it has not been done in the ways that we're going to be trying. And so, it's important, like, as a scientist and an artist, to, to try new things without the fear of failure because oftentimes you learn more from the failure than you do from the success.
All right, do you wanna talk about the interests then?
So, so at this point, CJ and Joanne are gonna say a couple of things about what they would like to get out of a class like this.
My question? Yeah, there we go. Hi, I'm CJ. I'm actually in two other interdisciplinary classes right now. So, I've kind of gotten the feel for how they really work out. And I think the best thing that they do is really, I don't think force is the right word, but it really brings you into topics that you wouldn't necessarily be interested in or wouldn't even care to try out. And even like an experience like this, I would never do this. Like, I'm not the best student, but it's still awesome to be involved in things like this. And I think this class is really gonna bring that in. Like, I actually used one of my interdisciplinary classes to get out of taking chemistry this year. So, if we, if, if they've found a way to get me to take chemistry and apply it to something that I've already taken and that I enjoyed so much, I think that's really awesome that, that they can do that, so.
So, what I'm most excited for about this class is how like, interactive it's gonna be and how hands-on, because I feel like I learn best when it's hands-on learning. And I've had Piccolo and Mueller both as teachers, and they've always been the kind that like really do, like, not, like, they accept your failures and really like push you to do better and always help you with everything. And I'm just excited to like, take their class together.
So, developing this class has been very interesting, very opening, or eye-opening for me. Not only has it kind of really forced me to develop these working relationships with local experts, but it's really asked me, or forced me, to really ask myself and really focus on appreciating the needs of my students, my current students, and how can I, how can I push them to do better? And how can I push myself to do better? And that has been one of the most important parts for me in designing this class. And it's really encouraged us to find creative ways, alternative ways, to kind of improve what we already have, what we already obtained for technology and equipment, and how can we increase that to better understand what we're working with and to kind of better expose our students to a big variety of easy technology and really complicated technology.
So, I've been here for, I think this is either my twentieth year or twenty-first year. And so, when you do the same thing for twenty years, you tend to grow stale like an old box of Cheerios. So, I think what I've learned from working with Ms. Piccolo is, is to look at what I do in a different light, more from, rather than just like, you know, just doing labs, I'm, I'm looking at designing projects so students have more choice, so more open-ended, so that they involve more things like, like visuals, like using the cellphone, incorporating the cellphone into, into what they're doing. And it's also taught me to reflect on, more on how I assess students. Like, I was a big, let's take the test and let's do the lab report. But this year, I've, I've kind of shifted to where I'm doing more projects. Like, we did a thermal imaging project where they had to use a thermal imaging camera to show something about heat transfer that they can't see with their eyes in the visible spectrum. And I was really amazed with the, the results that I got. And for example, all my classes turned their projects in on time. And they all got up and spoke about it without wanting to argue about having to get up and speak about it. And they all did, it was amazing what they, they'd come up with. And so, it just really opened my eyes that, you know, tests and labs don't have to be like the, the only type of assessment, that you have these other projects, are there ways we can access student learning? I think that's been very powerful for me. And then also, I find that, you know, the more you collaborate with somebody, the more ideas you generate and, and the more you bring those ideas back into your own classroom. And I think that's one of the most powerful things. There's like a theory out there that said that, you know, one of the reasons why we've done so well is because of the invention of the tavern in the coffee house, because people would get together and discuss ideas. And it's those discussions that led to some great discoveries. And that's kind of the process that we're mirroring as we go through and develop this class. And so, oh, just to show you one other thing, kind of, we brought one little demonstration, sorry.
Yeah.
And so, one of the things we're going to look at is, how can you take everyday objects and use them to distort light or collect light? And so, these are a common toy called Orbeez, which are a super-absorbent polymer sphere that swell up and absorb like, I don't know, a hundred times their weight in water. And the interesting thing about water is it has a different refractive index than air. So, and it's in a spherical shape. And so, when light goes through these, the, the Orbee, this little, like, cheap toy, acts like a lens. And so, if you take it and you can hold it up to your eye and you can find the focal length, oh, you take it out of the case. Yeah, yeah.
It's squishy. It's just squishy. It won't pop.
No, they don't, they don't pop. And so, you can kind of hold it and then you can look through it. If you get to the focal point, you can see an image, and the image will be inverted, just like it would be in a handheld camera or a lens. Because it takes the light that's coming in from the top and it bends it, and it comes out the bottom and the light... coming in from the top, and it bends it, and it comes out the bottom, and the light that comes in the bottom, it bends it, comes out the top. And so you get an inverted image. And you can do all sorts of fun things, like, if you put them in front of a cellphone camera, you can take images. And so like, one of the images you see.
Can we get back through there? How do I get back? I can't.
Yeah, is of us taking pictures of each other. And you can, like, get close, and you can squeeze, and you can make facial features get really large or really small. But you can get all types of distortions with that. And you can, it's hard to do with bifocals, but it can be done. And so with this one little simple toy, you have a lens. The cool historical connection to this is Van Loonhoek used glass beads to make the first microscope. The spheres will focus light. And so he discovered germs, and not germs, but you see all these paramesium and stuff floating in water that nobody had ever seen before, by looking at light that was shined, shown through the pond water into the glass sphere, and then focused onto a screen. And those were the first, one of the first microscopes, which are really kind of cool. And so this kind of mirror has that historical connection, mirrors that. And then from there, we're gonna actually have them go on and make lenses out of ice and other things like that. So, but these are the kind of things that we are planning to do with the students. And another cool thing for these, you can take them home, you can put them in your pot with your plant, and they will absorb water. And then if you forget to water them, they'll release the water. And then when you water them again, they'll absorb the water. And so like, you get timed release of water. And so you can keep your plants alive longer. So, they used to throw them in the soil in Arizona, but then it kept the water from getting into the groundwater. And so the water table started going down, so that's banned now. But anyway, interesting stuff. So.
That's it.
And that's, that's, so, yep, so we're actually really looking forward to doing this next year. And if you guys have any questions for us, or you want to come in and observe a class, we would love to have you guys come and observe next year. That'd be great.
I just smiled his hand already, I believe.
Andy and Sean, will you please talk about another experience that you had, which was writing a grant and receiving a grant?
So, we originally thought, may I ask?
Yeah, I thought you may.
So, I tend to talk over people, so just kick me.
I'm gonna, go ahead.
That's why we're so, she just kicks me really hard in the shit. So, we originally thought we'd get 20 kids to sign up, and then we'd have five kids that wouldn't fit in the schedule, so we'd end up with 15 kids. And like, that would be a good first year for just like, having enough equipment and getting this thing running. And then we found out there were 38 kids, and there were gonna be a full 30 in the class. And we're like, oh crap, like, where are we gonna get all the equipment for this? So we decided, hey, let's write grants. So in one month, we wrote four grants. And we wrote a grant for the Lions Club, which we got $1,000. And that's for building, we're gonna build a camera-obscure trailer.
Yeah, so we plan to build a, like, a six-foot by eight-foot trailer that will take an image as a pinhole camera. So it's a massive camera that'll take like a four-foot by six-foot image roughly. And it'll double as a darkroom. So it'll have like solar safe lights, and the kids will be able to climb inside, take a picture, and then develop it right there on the spot. So then we plan to take it down into elementary schools and middle school, and then kind of bring our darkroom to them where they don't have current access. And then have our students be able to kind of teach what they understand and what they learn to these kids. And they'll build like, small little pinhole cameras, and then be able to use them on-site. So this project will utilize, what do you say, we're almost 175 kids. We'll use the product design class to help us design, and then the automotive kids will help us build the foundation for the trailer. And then our wood shop, their class will help us kind of box it in. Our class will work on creating a light safe and converting it into a camera. And then we have a painting and drawing class that will create a steam-inspired mural on the outside. So we'll be able to hitch this up and drive this from location to location and be able to fit several students at one time, use it as a teaching tool and a learning tool all at once. So that was that grant.
And then we got another one for $350 from the New Hampshire Art Educators Association.
Yeah, that one helps cover supplies to help kind of fund the pinhole camera that will teach the elementary kids to make kind of on-site. So that helps cover our startup costs for that.
And then our third grant, we really didn't know what we were getting ourselves into with this one, because it was a title four grant. And we were just like, oh, great, we're gonna write this. And then we put it off, and we, well, we talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it, and didn't really write very much. And then we finally, like, okay, we have to do this. And it was actually a really in-depth process. And you have to look at your school's logic model, and you have to look at your school demographics. So it's almost like doing a graduate school capstone project, because you have to do a lot of that for the first part of the project. And it also involved a lot of collaboration with, Mark helped us quite a bit, and Mr. Johnson, Mr. Z, and our department heads. And through this effort, we wrote this grant, and it was for 28,000 some odd dollars for cameras, tripods, more cameras, printers, equipment. Most, all of it was non-consumable, because a big part of this grant was sustainability. And some money, more money for the trailer. And then we found out after two delays on Friday, that there were 91 grant applications competing for $1,43,000. And the grant applications asked for a total of $4 million. And 21 grants were accepted, and ours was one of those 21 grants. So. Which was crazy, because I think if we had, like, I don't know, we just didn't know any better not to apply for something like that. So we just, like, did it. And now we're actually getting pretty good at grants. So then after that, we finished that one, we thought, oh, what the heck, there's one more. And so we applied for that one, we hear, in June for that one. And then, so.
And that's it for a little bit, I think.
Yeah, it's a lot of sleepless nights. So, but yeah, it's been, it's been a really a good process. I will never be afraid of writing a grant again, so.
Or writing a class.
Or writing a class. So, and another one thing I want to say is always, like, Mr. Johnson's been trying to get me to do one of these classes forever. Like, I think like for three, four years now, and I'm like, no, no, I don't want to do it. I want to just teach my chemistry and be my happy chemistry self. And I realize what an idiot I've been, and like, this has been a much better experience for me in terms of professional and personal growth. So I'm really glad that you did not give up on me, and I'm glad that you asked me to do this, because after 20 years, I was starting to get a little stale. So, and that's it, I'm done. Cause I'm getting tips.
You're done.
Any questions on the board? So Andy?
So, this isn't a question, this is a comment. So, those of you who don't know, I'm old, right? And I graduated from Merrimack, what, 41 years ago this year? 41? No, 43. Yeah, a long time ago. When you, when you were giving your presentation, you said words, chemistry, develop, expose, failure, lab. I was a photographer at Merrimack High School 43 years ago, where we had to do film and develop the film. And all the things that you're talking about are like, the phrases don't ever change, the technology and stuff. So, and when the solar eclipse happened, I didn't get one of those great glasses, but I made a pinhole camera out of a box. So everybody's got cameras, I'm looking in a silly box with this image down here. So I'm really excited. I wanted, I'd love to be able to see what you build with that trailer and stuff, because to me, that's, that's showing how it works without all the new gangfangled things. I mean, we all have better cameras now than we ever imagined on having years ago. So I'm real excited about this interdisciplinary.
So one of the things we did this semester to kind of pilot a lesson that we're gonna be teaching them, is we converted my classroom into a pinhole camera. And we were able to invite his classroom, or his class and my class, inside, turn off all the lights, and be able to project the image outside onto our film plane. And they all kind of thought, like, oh, it looks like a TV screen. It doesn't look any different, until we sent a student outside. And as soon as they saw a student walk across and stand where they, their minds were blown. And they, they started to understand, like, the light does come from out there, and it comes inside. So a lot of that is so just kind of theoretical, because it happens inside a tiny box, and the image appears magically, which is what happens currently with their cellphone. So they kind of take a lot of that for granted. And to be able to kind of get inside of the camera and to physically see the light come through a tiny little aperture, a little opening, and get projected upside down, kind of inverted, they got to understand that and really participate on how that camera works and how that functions. We'll be able to, you know, show them how the optics work, and how the, the light doesn't bend, it goes straight, and then it inverts your image. So that was one of the really cool learning tools for us, and how we work together, and how we teach, and how receptive they are. So the image on the right is taken from my classroom. We flipped it upside down, so it didn't look like we put the slide in upside down. But the image was inverted, projected on a rolling blackboard. And so they were able to see what the trees, what the outside looks like, right outside the classroom, projected through the, through a tiny little hole in a piece of paper. Just really cool.
And that's a four-foot by six-foot image. And recently, we captured a portion of that on.
Film.
On film. So, and this is a digital image, but we actually captured it on film as well.
That's a great thing.
Are there any other questions on the new interdisciplinary class? We're very excited. This is exactly, you know, we, I spent a little time on Parkin, it was just getting started with interdisciplinaries. So just where it's going is exactly, I think, what we, as a board, we're looking forward to hearing. Just, you know, not, not, just throwing the box out the window unless you're making a camera with it, obviously. But just, you know, really looking at what will engage students, get them to want to take a chemistry class, kind of trick them into taking chemistry, which you're gonna be doing next year. But make them want to take it as you trick them into taking it. So, you know, it definitely gets them engaging in those areas where they feel that they aren't, you know, what you would call comfortable, and put a comfort zone in that. So I think that will, will create lifelong learners more than, you know, the old way of doing things. So, great work. I know this is your first year here, I hope you've really enjoyed it. So, and obviously, the ideas never stop coming, so I'm glad you, I'm glad you're doing this next year. So it's great stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say that's a tough act to follow? So my name is Carolyn Rortam. I am the Art Department, Tech Ed Department Chair. And I'm gonna talk about our Art of Science class, which presented a couple of years ago with students from the Art of Science class. And we talked about the projects that we had done and that kind of thing. But really what I wanted to touch on tonight is really talk about, for me, how teaching an interdisciplinary course evolved my teaching experience. And one of the things that, as a creative person, teaching the creative process is not easy. People have this sort of idea of that the creative, that creative people just, it just comes out of their brain and just flops onto paper, and there's no process involved. But in the sciences, you know, they have experimental design. And what I discovered in just working in a science classroom with a scientist, as a creative person, we started just kind of talking about our discipline back and forth. And I, she, in talking about experimental design, I realized that it equaled the, it was the same as the creative process. And both, both of these processes encourage failure, as you know, you saw with the experimental photography, as with any of the interdisciplinary classes, encouraging failure, because the, because success, you know, equals reflection upon that failure, acceptance of the failure, and the creation of a plan to continue forward. So there's, you know, and then repeating that process, you know, it's, it's, you know, and until you get to a successful solution to the problem. So this was one of the most profound experiences I had while teaching Art of Science, was being introduced to experimental design. So, you know, many people think the sciences, you know, everything is the scientific method, it's logical, it's methodical, it's coherent, and we step very carefully from one step to the next, and it's all very, you know, neat and tidy, and we collect data, and then we reflect. And then they think about the creative process, and they think it looks something like this. And, you know, start somewhere, blah, 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 and then end. And actually, it's not the creative process, not if the creative person wants to get anything done. It doesn't happen that way. The creative process actually looks a lot like this. The inspiration comes, you do the research, you have the vision, the ideas, you do some more thinking, you do some brainstorming, you get maybe another inspiration, a different inspiration, you fail, you get up, and you go for another try, and you continue this process until you have created something that is expressing that original inspiration, or maybe it's an iteration of the inspiration. And that is the creative process. So I recognize in that, in that process right there, that artists and scientists were doing the same thing, we're just talking about it in different ways. So I recognize this in what I do when I'm in my studio as an, as an artist. I recognize the scientific process as the creative process. And I, we tried to really impart that on the students in our class, is, you know, to not have these things separated. There was a TED Talk by this woman who talked about creating, teaching creativity. And she talked about artists as having, people who are comfortable with ambiguity. And when she said that, I said, hmm, scientists are comfortable with ambiguity. And they do cross-disciplinary research. Creative people have to do cross-disciplinary research. Understanding different disciplines is in order to express the ideas. And they solve problems. Creative people solve problems, scientists solve problems, politicians solve problems. And all of these interdisciplinary classes, you know, the kids learn how to solve problems. And the idea of cross-disciplinary research really brings about that design thinking that the industry is really hungry for. The, you know, corporations will always talk about, you know, we need people who can understand design thinking. And that's like, bringing these students through this process is a super important part of interdisciplinary studies. And so the other thing that I was brought, that was brought to my attention was the, people who have done the CRISPR research, and they're, it's basically a gene knitting technology. It's not important what it is. But they were talking to the, one of the researchers, one of the scientists, about the CRISPR research. And when you talk about gene editing, there's a lot of ethics that might come up. And so they were asking her, well, how are you gonna tackle the ethics of the gene splicing and the, and genetic modification and those ideas? And what she said was, I don't think it's going to be the intellectuals in their silos talking to each other about this. It's going to be the movie makers, and the artists, and the writers, science fiction writers. It's going to be those people, because those are the people, once they understand whatever the, whatever it is that they're talking about, the ethics of what they're talking about, or the science behind what they're talking about, they're the ones that are good at communicating the ideas. And so they're the important ones to bring into these scientific processes. So, you know, in sort of a summary of that, you know, the Art of Science or all of the interdisciplinary courses bring these seemingly disparate things together to help students understand that, you know, they need to, you know, dive deeply into all the disciplines in order to come to original ideas. And I just want to touch on finally, really quickly, how teaching an interdisciplinary course, Art of Science, changed a student's life. You may be familiar with the name on the screen, Kimberly Ortega. Unfortunately, I tried to, tried to book her for this event, but she's in the middle of final exam week, and she wanted to stay for that. But she did very kindly write to me a letter, and I just wanted to kind of read to you what she said about her experience in Art of Science or interdisciplinary learning. Interdisciplinary learning was an integral part of my high school experience. Classes like the American Experience and the Art of Science opened my eyes to the importance of an academic foundation in all subject areas. The Art of Science in particular demonstrated how my chemistry knowledge could connect my passion for painting. Noticing my excitement about the class, Dr. Campbell and Ms. Rortam researched art conservation, a field in which masters of chemistry and art history scientifically analyzed paintings to either restore, conserve, or verify the authenticity of works of art. Following their recommendation, I looked into the field of, into the field. I was immediately infatuated with it. This fascination led me This fascination led me to attending the University of Delaware, home of one of the only and most highly ranked undergraduate conservation programs in the country. My coursework here is a combination of intensive chemistry, studio art, and art history classes. However, to be a conservator, I cannot simply think like a chemist, an artist, or a historian, but rather a master of the three, which requires the interdisciplinary thought process taught to me in high school. My background from high school has trained me to constantly think about the applications of my learning, which gives meaning to otherwise dreary, dreary dungeon requirements. I am fortunate to have taken interdisciplinary classes and encouraged Merrimack to keep these incredible programs. And so that was Kim Ortega's words on interdisciplinary classes. And so just to let you know that these classes have definitely changed some students' lives significantly, to the point where I happen to know that she was not sure what she wanted to do until she took Art of Science. And so, in particular.
Questions from the board? Questions from administration? I feel Mark's going to jump out of his skin. Okay.
I am, just because I, sort of like I was saying to the teachers a few minutes ago, I just think it's, tonight's really important because I just, it matters very much that the taxpayers in Merrimack know that they are supporting innovation every day in the work that our teachers are doing. And, you know, it's easy to go through, you know, day-to-day and just kind of, you know, if there's no big news at the high school, you don't really know what's, what's going on. But it's a night like this to be able to reassure people that we are not satisfied with the status quo or doing things the way they've always been done, just because they've always been done. Every day, so many teachers at, in our district, but tonight we're focusing on Merrimack High School, are really trying new things. And, and I just want to stress again, so many folks have talked about failing forward. We talk about failing forward, not taking a failure as a sign of it having not worked, but rather as a benchmark for what to do differently to move forward. And that's how life works, and our students are really learning that. And, and again, it's, it's not an easy thing for, for teachers to do that. And so I just, I just, I think the message for me for tonight is, every day when everybody else, you know, goes to their jobs and they hope that they're putting their kids in a, in a good place, they are putting their students in a good place, and in a place that's really encouraging them to think bigger and broader than they have ever before. And I really thank the teachers for stepping up so profoundly, you know, and really, really answering that, that call. It happens because teachers do it. So, that was it.
Right, absolutely.
And I just want to do an end. And hearing authentic student voice tonight was so important. So we've highlighted over the last four years about inquiry and innovation, and tonight, the authentic student voice about what it means to me to be taking this particular interdisciplinary course of study, be it that it forms a career path, or that it makes something so much more engaging, like I will not miss this class because it has so much meaning to me. And I think that's what we were trying to do too, or I should say, the teachers, the educators were trying to do. So tonight, to me, is proof of the effort. And so I very much appreciate all effort too.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add that I thank you for supporting these classes. And I want you to know that you only received a small sampling of what's been going on these past few years. So the seed was planted three years ago, and ultimately, my vision, working with these remarkable teachers, and you've heard some remarkable teachers tonight, some incredible kids, was ultimately to create an interdisciplinary pathway to a diploma. And I know that charge is going to be left to others, but some of the people you saw tonight, just wonderful talent. And again, thank you for your support and your continued support of this innovation, this creativity, this inquiry, whether it be from medieval land to world's fairs to failing forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'd be remiss not to mention, this is your last time with us as high school principal and year in review. Well, I thank you for your service to the district, the inspiration you gave our kids over the, I want to say fourteen years?
It's actually been twenty years in Merrimack High School and sixteen years as principal.
Oh, gotcha, sixteen years, sorry, as, as, as the man in charge. But we can't thank you enough for your service to the district. We wish you all the best in your retirement and hope it brings you the same joy you brought to our kids every day.
Well, I thank you. I said to Ms. Chaffrey just two weeks ago, I've had, in these past twenty years, I've had two great loves in my life, my family and Merrimack High School. And I really feel that I've been blessed, having been afforded the opportunity to serve really great kids in a wonderful community. So I thank you very much for those kind words.
Thank you, Ken. We are on to item number five, which is the AOK Campaign. And I invite to the table Sarah Heimberg. Yes, so Mark, if you can give a proper introduction to Sarah and the AOK Campaign?
Happy to do it.
I would appreciate it.
Happy to do it. So as Sarah sets up, it's a great segue to, from, the previous group and presentation was a great segue to Sarah, because she's another Merrimack High School student who is charting her own path and helping others along the way. And really, Andy and Cindy could say as much as I could about what Sarah's done. But over the years, Merrimack Safeguard has, has really, I think, been a, a very quiet force, and perhaps even an underappreciated force in our community for what it is attempting to do to create a safe and drug-free school environment. And one of the things that it has launched are a number of initiatives that have intended to go far beyond the school district and really more broad. And so back in early April, at a community event that Merrimack Safeguard sponsored, we introduced the AOK Campaign, whose entire focus is on involving the community to support the concept that we're all in this together, and that whether it's an academic struggle or a struggle with substance abuse, or any other kind of struggle, there are people, there are helpers who are around who can assist you, and you must just learn to be comfortable to ask for help. And so Sarah's going to say much more about it than that. However, as part of her Gold Award project for Girl Scouts, she created a video campaign that kicks off and encapsulates what Merrimack Safeguard is trying to support. And so she's here tonight to do the second world premiere of her, of her AOK Campaign video. And we're delighted to have her tonight. And we're going to brag about Sarah later for another thing, but tonight, right now, it's the AOK Campaign.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Good evening, yes, and my name is Sarah Heimberg, and I attend Merrimack High School in addition to being a lifelong Girl Scout. And the Gold Award project is the highest level of Girl Scouting. It's, we like to say it's equivalent to the Eagle Scout project, except in my eyes, it's way beyond what the Eagle Scouts have to do. And it really is, because you have to have so many different aspects to it. You have to do at least eighty hours, although I accidentally went a little overboard. And you have to make sure that it's sustainable, which is why I incorporated the video into it. And it has to address a community issue that will benefit as many people as possible. And the AOK Campaign, as Dr. McLaughlin alluded to, it came out of Merrimack Safeguard. And we had done a campaign entitled Be Responsible Merrimack. And it consisted of a variety of interviews with different community forums. And we constructed a long list of things that people said in these group interviews. And one of the things that we noticed is a lot of the issues that they mentioned stem from not asking for help when you need help. And I remember sitting in this meeting and thinking back to when I was in first grade. And I was confused by my math lessons. And I remember we had this little math book, and you were able to write in it, which was the best thing. I wish I could still do that in math today. And we were doing these math boxes, and they were so confusing to little six-year-old me, who was probably about this tall. Luckily, I've grown a little bit since then. And I was confused, but I didn't want to ask for help, because I knew that I would be made fun of, or at least I thought I would be. I probably wouldn't have been in the grand scheme of things. But I was afraid to ask for help, which kind of made me even more confused. Luckily, I kind of figured it out, and I was fortunate in that. But I came to realize that if you don't ask for help when you're yay-hi and don't understand what two plus two equals, then it's going to be even more difficult when you get to trigonometry and calculus in high school. And two plus two is a whole lot easier than trigonometry and calculus. And if you are struggling in the earlier years because you don't want to ask for help, then you're going to resort to high-risk behaviors as a stress release. And so the more likely you are to ask for help, the better off you're going to be, which is how we came to this video. So without further ado, I present AOK. Hopefully it'll work.
So it's kind of like, depending on the situation, if it's called for, I will ask for it.
I ask for help whenever I need a problem solved, or I'm looking for some information.
You know, when I do ask for help, it, it does work out very well in the end. I realize things went a little bit smoother, was a little bit easier.
There are problems that of great magnitude that individuals can't deal with on their own, that they need some help to try to walk through and, and provide some direction so that, from professionals, so that they can learn how to solve those problems in a more efficient, in a more reconciliable way.
We all need to ask more questions of ourselves, of our families, of our communities, of our politics, of our social justice structures. Everywhere in history where people have been oppressed, it's been in a situation where people were afraid to ask questions.
You will feel better if you ask for help, but also things will not get as bad as they possibly could if you would ask for help.
I see a lot of buses that kids will, again, be picked on by somebody for quite a while before they report it to me. And then I'll talk to a parent, and the parent might say, wow, you know, this has been going on for three months. Well, if you've asked me three months ago, the last two months probably wouldn't have happened.
Well, how do you help? Oh, yeah, people are like, yeah, I love helping people. You know, I give my buddy the shirt off my back. I drop anything I would do. I'd get a shovel to help my buddy bury a body. Like, people do that, you know what I mean? People say that stuff all the time. But flipping around, how do you feel like when you're asked, you know, to help somebody out? People feel good, right? So why wouldn't you ask for help? Because people are willing to do that. It's almost like you have to get over your own insecurities.
At times, we're all looking for something that we're, might be helpful to us and might help us through a really difficult time.
We each come to the table with different skills and talents, and if we were more interdependent, you know, we would play off each other. So the best of you would help me, and the best of me would help you.
People are confronted with so many social issues and family issues and work issues that not the, or I should say, the old systems that we were all relying upon about trying to just muddle through and deal with it on your own, just don't work anymore. And if that's what it needs to, to move in that direction, then go get the help that you need.
There's at least a picture of everybody's in their home and everybody's fine, but everybody who is pictured as having it all together, being willing to ask for help, or to tell the stories about when they didn't and how it turned into a mess, then we set a tone.
I have found myself, over the last couple of years, asking, for instance, my son if he needs help with something, and trying to do it with a smile on my face. And I think more people doing that, I think it's kind of like the rising tide lifts all boats.
I think it's all in communication. I think it's when you speak to the parents, you give your business card, or you let them know that you are available, you know, to help them with their issues.
And when you develop relationships, usually comes trust. And when you have trust, you can rely on persons to do whatever they tell you they're going to do. Perhaps it's how it's offered, how it's rendered.
How do they treat me about it later? Like, do you remember the time that you fell and couldn't get up? Is, is not a good feeling, where, do you, do you remember when we did this together? Or whatever, whatever. That's a good feeling still.
I think most of them who offer help do it very confidentially. They don't, I mean, they don't, they wouldn't broadcast the fact that they're helping such and such a person.
And I think that's okay, because it's talking about it and it's making it more comfortable. Like, there shouldn't be a stigma of, hey, we're going to counseling. And, you know, why is there a stigma about that? Because we just want to be better people?
You'd never, ever want to close the door on an individual who needs help or who's requesting help. There are probably, or used to be, many more individuals who didn't recognize that they needed help, but really did.
There seems to be a group of people that once they figure out how to receive assistance and help and aid, will take it for all it's worth, and use everybody. Then there seems, on the other hand, to be people who just won't accept help. And right now, we live in a world that's really mad at the, at the group that are takers. So that makes it even harder to reduce the stigma.
I think in some cases, persons don't even know where to go for assistance. It's perhaps, you know, just behind the scenes, and it needs to be more pronounced.
Make the help more available in the sense that sometimes I don't know that the help is there. You know, so if I don't know that the help is there, I, I guess more publicity on whatever is out there.
I mean, there's a lot of charities, there's a lot of nonprofits, there's a lot of, but even trying to organize them all into one. I know that the Brady Sullivan thing that they've been doing, where they've been scaling the building, brought together, it was like twenty-three different nonprofits in the state, all together for one cause.
How much good can we do in X amount of time? Well, that is very upbeat, and it created a real storyline. And so it's like, where are they going to go next? And what are they going to do? And I'm thinking, why couldn't we do somewhat the same? You know? We're about in X number of days, wanting to do X. It's going to be a lot of good.
And ask groups of folks who are not the go-to people who say yes to everything. Look for people who don't usually help, and see if you can invite them.
People bond over things that are, when they're emotionally, emotionally connected over something, that's when people bond, right? They, it's proven fact. When you go through something exciting, scary, sad, traumatic, what have you, you're emotionally connected to somebody.
If you have that knack of being able to put yourself in their shoes, even if you don't agree with what they're doing, it helps resolve the conflict a lot easier than if you, you know, you're not open-minded.
I want to help you, but you need to know that I have a thing about buckets and pipes. Buckets collect help for themselves, pipes pass it on. So what I would ask of you is, the next time you can help somebody, I'd like you to do it.
Can you help me? No, I'm not helping you. You know? You know?
Fantastic. Are there questions, comments from the board? Honestly, I can't say enough about, you know, I've seen you since you've come to the board as a fifth grader, I think your first year on the trumpet. And just the young lady that you've become constantly showing, saying an example of, you know, choosing the good, finding the good, and finding those ways to spread the good with your talents, with your ideas. We're so proud of you. We really are.
Thank you.
So this is great work. Safeguard has got a lot of, they're handsful as a community organization. I think you encapsulated that very well. Sorry, very beautiful work. But we can thank you enough for the work you're doing. And the Girl Scouts, I hope, can create an honor even higher than what they have already to show what you've already done, because I think you're setting a higher bar even so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny, can I?
Of course, Mark. Please do.
So I just, I also want to say, Sarah won't, but she almost wasn't here tonight. And the reason that she almost wasn't here tonight is because she competed in the Portsmouth Symphony Orchestra Concerto Competition and won. And what that... And as a result, she gets to, she will play with a concerto with the orchestra and they're in rehearsals right now. And one of the rehearsals might have been tonight. It looks, it turns out that it wasn't, but she was very responsible to tell me that that might have conflicted. And then if that's the case, we would have seen her in June. But anyway, this is another example of a young student in Merrimack who is incredibly talented and has taken her talents, not just for herself, but is really contributing to the health of our community by this campaign, which is going to be distributed or has begun to be distributed already to organizations in Merrimack and in doctor's offices. This will be on a roll and in a loop, rather, you know, in waiting rooms and in other places. And finally, the connection I want to make is that, as you know, Julie DeLuca and John Fabrizio have done so much work with the District Mental Health Committee, which has really been an offshoot of Julie's participation in Merrimack Safeguard several years ago. And what we're learning now is that, you know, life is complicated enough and we can't just sit stoically by and let our stresses and our troubles kind of fester. But if you're a young person out there or anybody in the community, you've got to find somebody who can be an ear and lend a hand. And it's okay to say, "I need something from you." And what Sarah did by connecting with so many different leaders in our community is to show that if the leaders can do it, then we all can do it. And so I really thank you because what you've done for us, it's helped you and you deserve to win the Gold Award. But whether you do or don't, you've really, Sarah, exponentially helped Merrimack as a community to be a stronger place, which is, I think, a legacy pretty cool for somebody your age. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on to item number six and I invite the, I have the unviewable task of yours. You have to follow this, guys. So James McCall, Upper Elementary Career Day Student Interest Survey. So I invite to the table Marsha McGill and Louis Myleau? Mayu? I'm so sorry. If you were Italian, I would have had it nailed, I promise. Welcome. Quite the follow-up, huh?
I know. What an actual follow. What an excellent evening to be here. I just had a smile on my face all night.
Yeah.
I wasn't taking part in it, but I guess I did have a part in it because they did come through our building.
You remember them when?
Wonderful evening, wonderful evening. Louis and I are here this evening because we are proposing to offer to our students a career day. It replaces our Enterprise City program, which has unfortunately closed its doors, which is very sad. So we thought, what would we be able to put together to help our students continue to learn about the world that they're moving into? So we've developed an activity that's a career day where we've invited a great deal of community people to come in and present to students. But there are a series of activities prior to the career day to help children, you know, bring out a lot of their background knowledge or to learn a lot more about the different types of careers and the skills that are required to have to perform those careers. And a part of it is to help them understand themselves and where their interests are because right now their thoughts are probably here, there, and everywhere. So we decided to look for a student interest survey that was student-friendly. We went for that purpose and came up with one and wanted to chat with you a little bit about that possibility this evening. And Mr. Mayu, did you have a few things you'd like to share first?
We actually found research when we were starting to do this that talks about getting kids interested in their own education and realizing that in middle schools and upper Ls, that you can gain their drive for different subjects by learning what adults around them do and what skills they use. So in the invitation to community members that are coming in, we've done things like when we spoke to the state police, we said it would be important to us to have a female trooper as well as a male trooper. The nurse, two nurses that are coming in, one female, one a male nurse, so that kids realize that the whole world is available to them. But also at the same time, to get them to realize that the foundations we're trying to make in education now are really critical to their future. So helping them find out things that they like to do and maybe making connections with, gee, I like to do that and that's a skill that this person said they use in their job. So in speaking with the community members coming in, we're really asking them to share what skills, what subjects you remember from school that really make a difference to your work today. And so we really did look at several surveys and this one really appeared to be the most kid-friendly, simply asking them to check off, do you like making a family menu? Do you like working with older people? Would you like being a lifeguard? And, you know, a lot of the work the kids can do while discussing with classmates. We've heard so much tonight about that cooperative learning piece and kids. So this is an activity that they could talk both with their educator, but also with each other as they start to look at these in class and say, "Wow, yeah, that would be interesting to me." So this one is really, even just reading the directions where they ask them about the first thing you ever thought of wanting to be. Now, my son works for BAE. For the longest time, when he was little, he wanted to be a fireman. And then he wanted to be a Catholic priest. And now he's working at BAE and I don't know what he does. He tells me if he told me, he'd have to kill me. But this really getting kids to think about that I have a future and that I'm growing into that future every day. So trying to get them excited about this by having a time with the community. They'll also be still working on a resume, which is something they did with Enterprise City, and learning, you know, what do people put on a resume? What are people asked on applications? So there's a lot of fun activities, looking through classified ads and saying, gee, when companies advertise for a job, what are they thinking? What are they looking for? What skills do I see there that relate to what I do every day in the classroom? Or because they are going to get to ask a family member about their career, either a grandparent or a parent or an aunt or an uncle, what do you do every day at work? And so they can start to see those connections and hopefully build that excitement that, yeah, this is really the first day of my future. So we kind of named the career day, "The Future Is Yours."
Other questions from the board in the survey? Any questions or comments from administration?
No, it's just, you saw that they are asking you to make a decision about the utilization of the survey tonight because of just the timing. If we waited till June 4th, it would just be a bit late. So we're just asking you to waive the two-week rule if you could.
You bet. So if there's no questions, are we ready to move forward with the survey for immediate disbursement? Okay. I do need a motion, actually. Cindy? It's like, go ahead. Go ahead, Cindy.
I'll just make a motion that's for the school board to authorize the administration at JMU's to be able to administer a career day student interest survey and waive the two-week rule.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. Any comments to the motion? Andy?
Just to let folks know that this survey is really for the student to fill out and provide to their teacher, their administration, to help craft where they go. There's no, this isn't the other kind of surveys that we've talked about to try to get information that's shared other ways. This is just to help guide them through the career day.
It's personal information.
Exactly.
Cindy?
I mean, I think that's a good point that Andy made. It looks like, I think it's worth explaining a little bit more about it, too, that it's basically allows them to express interest as they look for groupings of career, of career positions or opportunities. So there's nothing that, it would really just help them understand and align their personal interests with the type of careers that are available in the world.
Definitely. And I think having student engagement will definitely get, for future student bodies, a more, you know, student-fulfilling experience. So it's almost like a peer review of, you know, what they're looking to get out of a program. So, which is kind of an interesting way of developing the content, which is very good, in my opinion. Naomi?
This is a question slash comment, in other words, to confirm, if you please. So this is essentially, there's nothing sensitive on here. It's just students essentially checking if they like working one way or another or what hobbies they like and so forth. And it won't be retained in any way. It's just for that day.
It's for them, for them to learn a little bit more about themselves and for them to be able to, like what Louis had said, you know, relate what they like, things that they like and, oh, I like to do this, I like to work with pets, I like to do whatever the activity is. And then all of a sudden, they realize, oh, this might lead into a career in, to be a veterinarian or whatever it happens to be. We like this survey also because it has 16 different categories that helps children, not just one or two or three, that really limits what they can do, but 16 different areas. And I think that really gives them a pretty good idea of the different types of jobs and skills that are needed.
Excellent. Okay, so with that, we'll put a motion to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Thank you and good luck in your survey. Cindy, of course.
Will there be any type of interviewing? Mrs. McGill, will you be doing any type of interviewing just with the day in general? Just out of curiosity.
Part of this particular day this year? In the future, could it expand to something like that? It could possibly, once we found out about the closing of Enterprise City and we started to put some things together and think about some different things, our time was a little more limited. But not this year, we haven't put that in place, but it might be something we'd develop to in the future. Mr. Do you have something?
One of the things we did is we reached out to some of our partners who've been helping with the interviewing with Exchange City for years and invited them to come share. So what we presented to the presenters is that if they could kind of share their information for 20, 25 minutes or so, and they can bring PowerPoint to use with our marvelous projection systems, they can share information. And then the students will have a good 20-minute period to ask them questions before they go on to the next thing that they were interested in. So, but we did tap some of our interview partners to say, "This is a change in format, but would you still like to give back to the community like you've been so faithful to us for so many years?" And many of them have been very gracious.
Yeah, that's really neat. And the reason I said the interview, the interviewing, is because I thought that was really neat. I know when my older one went through the upper elementary school, it was really kind of a neat experience for him and he dressed up and it gave him a sense to kind of study certain things in a certain way. And so I thought that was a really positive thing. So that would be neat if, I can certainly understand where there's a limitation on the scope as you try to undertake this, but I'm really interested to see if that's something that might be a possibility going forward into the future.
Excellent. And I think we're good. Thank you again. So on to item number seven, which is the authorization for school board chair, superintendent and assistant superintendent for business to sign public school infrastructure project completion and request for payment forms. So, Marc, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. So there really are going to be two parts to this item. I'm going to handle the bat mitigation project at the upper elementary school and then I'm going to have that separated and ask Matt to discuss with you the efforts that are being taken relative to bats throughout the district, what we're doing relative to that. So in your packet, you have documentation that needs to be completed in order for us to access funds from the public school infrastructure project to help offset expenses for the bat infestation that occurred at the upper elementary school. You might remember that Matt submitted an application, and this is, by the way, a governor's fund. The governor has worked, Governor Sununu has worked in conjunction with Commissioner Ettleblow at the Department of Education to take some surplus funds and put it into, for projects for public school infrastructure. And so Matt really felt that this bat mitigation would fit the bill, if you will. And so we received an award letter to that effect in February, and I've included that so you could see it. So what we were told is you cannot submit your paperwork to receive the offset until you have completed every aspect of the project. And so that's why we're coming to you tonight, because we have everything put together, every invoice, receipt, picture. Because it's easy, it will, some projects are going to be audited, we've been told that. And so in case that happens, we're fully prepared. So tonight, really, what it's doing is asking the board to officially, formally, request that Shannon as the chairman, I as the superintendent, Matt as the assistant superintendent for business, sign the documents, have them notarized, send them off to the DOE, the Department of Education. And we have been told that we will receive our funds within a month's time. This particular project, we had to estimate what will it cost to do the mitigation at the upper elementary, and we estimated $600,000. And so we have been awarded $180,000. So that is, which is 30% of the project, and we're very pleased about that. This fund is a one-time offering and the fact that it came when it came is just a very, very good thing. So I would ask if you've got questions about that, we could cover that. And then I think if you would be willing to do the authorization, and then we'll go to Matt to talk about bats in general.
Okay. Are there questions? Andy?
So just so I'm clear, the, this is the one for the bat mitigation where you've got everything sort of completed, right?
Correct.
If I remember right, there was a second part of this around the cameras, and I'm assuming, I'm going to put words in your mouth, that this will be coming after we finish the projects with the cameras to go for the reimbursement for that.
So you're absolutely correct. The entire public, school infrastructure funds must be completed by June of 2019. So what you can't do is you can't go through this authorization until you've completed the project. So obviously, you realize the cameras are in the next budget, right? So after July 1st, Matt will go through and work with Tom Tussow. We will get cameras for the middle school and the high school. Once we have amassed all of our receipts and so on, then we will come forward with documents that look just like that, except they'll be targeted to that project. So you're absolutely correct.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, do you need to perform a vote on this, I assume? Oh, you bet. So, Andy?
I move that we allow the school board chair, the superintendent, and the business administrator to sign these school infrastructure proj- business administrator to sign these school infrastructure project completion forms such that we can be reimbursed.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. Motion carries 400.
So, now, if...
We still have, we have the bats story.
That's right. So, Matt is just going to get us updated on what has gone on to this point relative to that topic.
Yeah. You see, the item that you just voted on, the scope of that was to remove the exterior brick, wash everything down, get rid of the existing bat guano that had been accumulating over a couple of years. It was 120 linear feet of brick, two stories tall, and encompassed an area of around 5,000 to 6,000 square feet of building. The upper elementary school is 124,000 square feet. The elementary school is Master Cola Elementary, which is adjacent to it, is another 60,000 square feet. So, you almost have 200,000 square feet of building that wasn't addressed in this remediation. This remediation was to get rid of the hazard. Now, we go to step two. And when we were talking in front of the board, the board conveyed to me that they wanted to make sure that this would not be a problem in the other schools. I heard that loud and clear. So, now, we're going through the rest of the upper elementary school. We've done that. We've sealed the perimeter. So, if there's any stragglers that are still left in the building, they can't get out. Now, we've also put in tubes that have one-way valves on them. So, their job, if they're hanging out in that building, is to find the tubes, go through it, and once the flap comes down, they can't get back in the building. And so, that's what's going on now. We're fighting a battle with the bats that remain. So, if we find one in a particular location, we'll add another tube in that location to, if we haven't caught the bat, to allow it to escape. So, now, the bats that are probably remaining, there's a few, because we've had a few sightings. I'm not going to say that that did not happen. They were captured. They were brought to critter control. They looked at them, and then they released them into the wild, far away from our building. But, we're sealing everything. We've done the high school. High school's completed. High school has been sealed. The tubes have been put in place, so if there's any bats in the high school, they can leave. The one-way door closes, and they can't get back in. Because at night, they go out to get insects. And so, at night, they will leave. Their usual means of egress has been sealed off. They'll go back to the tube. They won't be able to get in because it's blocked. So, the Master Cola complex, we've had critter control go back a couple of times to add some more tubes in and to look to see if there were any other openings. The high school's been finished. May 26th and 27th, we're going to start on Reed's Ferry School to do the same process, sealing all the perimeters, looking at every single little gap, nook, and cranny that a bat could squeeze through, which is probably around the size of your thumb. Install the tubes with the one-way devices. And then, in June, we're going to tackle the, the middle school. So, that is our strategy to make sure that this issue that we have comes to an end, and they find a new home. So, that's kind of the status. But, I just wanted to make it clear that the money that we spent recently, over the winter time and into the spring, was to remediate the feces that was there, to tear down the wall, to build the wall back up, to fog everything, to sanitize everything. And now, we're going around making sure that any unwanted intruders who are left over can leave and not come back in. So, that's the plan.
Questions? I think Naomi?
So, I'm not a bat expert that falls to you in this district, but my understanding is that some bats returning was to be expected, that they're migratory?
Yes, correct.
And so, this is a time of year when they'd be coming back and looking for ways in. So, it's not, these aren't bats that have been here through the remediation process.
No.
They're wandering back.
When the remediation process was done, everything was exposed. And there were, we found two bats during the remediation process that were hibernating in a little area, and they were taken out. But, there was nothing there, because I walked the entire thing, and I saw there was nothing there. Everything was gone. So, these aren't bats left over from that process. These are bats that were previously kind of hanging out in the school, hither and yon, you know, not in the compact, nice area that all the rest of them like, but in other little areas that they just, they just found in. So, now that we seal, they're trying to get out their usual escape routes. They're not there. And so, sometimes they can come into a gym or something like that. And so, that's why the tubes are there, to provide them a one-way access out, because they'll learn where they are. They'll find out that this is a tube. I can go through the tube. Ahah, I can fly out. Because they'll be able to see kind of the light in the evening. They'll be able to see that escape route. And when they come back, because they'll come back to the same spot, they won't be able to get in, because it closes behind them. Don't let the door hit you on the way out. That's our motto for bats.
Andy?
So, I have two questions. One, do we have a ballpark estimate for what this overall estimate will be?
Yeah, the additional for the rest of the district is around $60,000.
Okay. The other question I've got is, obviously, we were, we were caught with a situation that we had to rectify at a very expensive amount. We're being proactive with all the rest of our buildings to make sure that they're remediated. Is this something that other districts do regularly? Is this something that maybe we can do as a learned experience to the rest of the districts in the state? I mean, this is the first time I recall us being, having, worried about bats to this level. And we don't have the only buildings in the state that are similar to this, right?
No, there's probably, every school district in this state has bats in it to some degree. I remember hearing years ago that the high school had them in there, and they do. Ever since, you probably went there, there were some sort of bats cruising around in the high school. You know, these, these buildings that are built over a period of years and the additions that are put on and on and on, it just lends itself to having little spaces that are open for bat population. So, we're not the only ones. In fact, you know, we're kind of giving everybody cause for concern as far as them taking a look at their own buildings, too, to see what issues they may have. They probably know about it, and they just kind of, you know, let it, let it be. But, we had a situation where they just piled up in one area and just made themselves known. So, I don't hear, I don't hear a lot of talk about, oh, my gosh, I have bats. People aren't going to announce that.
I mean, I don't know what the opportunity is in the state, but this is a huge learning experience, not only for us, but for other districts. And it would be interesting to see whether, whether there could be some sort of a, you know, a case study that could be done, that could be shared across other districts.
I was talking to Amy Clark, who's the, the head of billing aid for the state. Amy with Marjorie Schoonemaker, who's in charge of school approval, they came on a tour with us when we were doing the remediation, because they wanted to see how it was done, because they'd never experienced anything like that before. And they wanted firsthand to look at it and take pictures so they could report back to the governor and the commissioner of education. And, you know, they, they came by, and I got a call from Amy, and she was, she was stating that, you know, there, there are other districts who are, who are looking into this right now to see. And she was wondering if sometime in the future, it'd be great to partner with a local university, UNH, something like that, to do a study of why. I'd like to know why. You know, they migrated to this particular area. They decided to call it home. Because basically, you know, we haven't seen that much at Thornton's, haven't seen that much at Reed's. The middle school, one would think, would have tons of them. But, maybe it's because of the construction of the building, it's newer, there's not those spaces for them to get in. But, it seems to be along the highway over here, and along that side, the side of the buildings that face the highway of where they're coming. So, I don't know if there's a relation or not, but it'd be interesting, once everything dies down and we're through with this, to partner up with somebody to do some sort of study about bat habitats and why they choose the areas they choose. So, I think it's a, you know, great idea and a topic for some enterprising young high school kids at some point in time.
I could see that Career Day presentation.
Yeah, that'd be a good presentation, wouldn't it?
Marge, did you have?
Well, I was just going to say to address Andy that because of the amount of press coverage we've had and television coverage, and it really started back when, and then we just had another go of it recently. Wherever I go, I mean, at all superintendents' meetings, they understand that we've become the bat experts, if you will. So, I think if anyone had an issue of the day, they would be calling here to get information, especially to know how we went about business. And I think that the Public Infrastructure Fund, our project at $180,000, is one of the biggest outlays of money, too. And to Matt's point, they came from the DOE to just see the project because they couldn't believe the size of it. You know, the fact that all this brick had to be taken down and the walls, you know, really had to be gone over. And so, it was almost like you had to come and see it to believe it, because no one has dealt with that amount of bat guano. But, I'd like to be known for something other than it, quite frankly.
Yeah. Our, our situation was even spoken of at a conference in Louisiana a couple of weeks ago. So, we're, we're kind of getting, we're raising awareness as far as this particular issue goes. So, if anybody around the area wants to build their own bat house, please be my guest. Build bat condos.
They should have sent you down for a panel discussion and some beniés.
[laughing]
So, are there, any other questions on, excellent. So, we'll discuss this at a future time on the same bat channel. I couldn't help myself. I couldn't. I had to. I made it all the way through to the end. So, kind of funny we're bringing this up tonight, but affirmation of school board committee assignments. So, my promise to you is to give you a handout. Now, obviously, it's been changed since my intent to hand it out. So, the design of the school board assignments for your refrigerators and mine is to lay out the 2018-19 by in-district and out-of-district assignments as they're laid out. And now, obviously, for 1819, Michael's former assignments are now TBA. So, what will probably have to happen is, once we do have a new school board member joining us, we may just have to take a review to see what we can do to, with coverages. So, there may be, we may have to revisit this at a future date. But, if this template works for everyone, then we can just kind of go with that going forward. Excellent. Okay. So, on that note, I think, Marge?
Can I just ask, I put down affirmation because I believe one of the things that the board talked about is for these, especially the out-of-district committee assignments, that there would be a formal approval by you. So, I just, just because that was raised up, it might be good to take a vote, and then you've got it there for posterity.
Okay. Did we approve it at the last meeting? We didn't?
No, because you hadn't formulated it, really.
Correct.
We're going to separate it out. But, because this is, you know, all at once, the out-of-district committee assignments, and it'll be...
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the out-of-district committee assignments as presented, if that works. Moved by Naomi. Go ahead. And seconded by Cindy. Would you like to speak to the motion? Any questions or comments?
I really liked what you did with this. It's clearer. We can see what is in district and what is out. And it also gives some much-needed accolades to the people who are putting time into out-of-district committees. So, thank you for the time on that.
No, no problem. So, on that note, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. The motion carries 400. And just for a point of clarification, I will go to Town Hall, because I am the alternate again, and will need to be re sworn in. So, I'll be filling in for Parks and Rec until further notice. So, one thing with out-of-district, if there is a requirement for, I swear, I think we should probably make sure that's covered. Okay. Onto item number nine, which is the approval of the May 7th, 2018 minutes. Do I have a motion? I'll make it. Do I have a second? Seconded by Andy. Are there any edits or comments to the motion? Cindy?
On page three, line number 102, I would just, it says, "Board Member Guayumi asked what penalties would result if PFOAs were detected." I would suggest putting Board Member Guayumi asked if the contract with, if the vendor contract could document penalties if PFOAs are identified or detected. Just a little clearer, because when I see penalties, I often think of things that are punitive from other places. So, it was specifically regarding the contract.
Gotcha. Any other edits? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. The motion carries 400. Onto consent, and I turn the mic over to Mark.
So, three items under consent tonight, the following teacher nominations. Hillary Burkish, kindergarten teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Christine Cosse, grade four teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. And Connor Lane, physical education teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
Andy?
I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Seconded, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. The motion carries 400. Onto item number 11, correspondence. We'll go first in your packets. There's a correspondence. It's an article from the Nashua Telegraph. One of our educators is in the finals for Teacher of the Year. That would be presented at this year's Eddie Awards. So, we wish the best of luck and congratulations for getting to the final, to Alice Donahoe, fourth grade teacher at James Master Cola Elementary School. So, is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none. Comments? Are there any comments to come before the board? Seeing none, I will just add one. And as I was reviewing the packet, I know that if I haven't heard it a million times, declining enrollments, we, we first did an enrollment snapshot on September 11th, and we get these monthly in our board packets. September 11th, our district started with 3,872 children. On May 7th, we're at 3,896. So, our enrollments have not declined, but they have gone up almost a classroom amongst themselves.
That's correct.
A good classroom amongst themselves, across 12 grades in the pre-K. So, I want to share that. Are there any other comments to come before the board? Seeing none. Is there any new business for the board? Marge?
I would just tell you, because I know you like to know for June 4th what's coming up. So, we will be having a focus on the three elementary schools and math, you remember. So, they're all, they're going to come together, and we will have an update on the Brentwood property. We will share a plot plan, hopefully a survey, and some engineering results that the board asked for. So, it's just moving us forward and doing things that we need to do to prepare for the closing in July. And Mark will be talking about the outcome from the homework protocol.
Thank you. Cindy?
As it relates to the elementary, will we be starting early? I know sometimes we do to give the elementary kids. Will there be any kids coming as part of the elementary presentation?
I would say yes, probably a minimal amount and so on. But, I will discuss that with the three principals on Wednesday when we have leadership. And if they feel the need to start at 6:30, would you be able to do that?
Yes, I would be able to. I just wanted to put that out there, because I...
Sure.
I just need to make sure that you're all available. Yes, thank you for asking.
And we'll post it as such, if that's the case. So, excellent. So, no other new business? Committee reports from the board. Any committee reports? I do. I went to Parks and Recreation, and they have, which I know, they have already filled up, or close to filling up some days, some weeks for Camp Natta Cook. But, they definitely are still taking active enrollments. So, if you are looking to send your kids to summer camp, and I know that's something that's very popular in our community, they have also posted, and you can find this on their website, you can find it on their Facebook page, they have the 2018 outdoor movies in the park schedule. The first one is Friday, June 8th, Murder on the Orient Express, the new version, not the older one. And they're also going to show Back to the Future in July. And they're also going to show Back to the Future in July, The Lion King in July. For the Merrimack Police Department National Night Out, it's Despicable Me on August... Despicable Me Three on August seventh. And then Friday, August twenty-fourth, they will wrap up the series with Boss Baby. And they also have the summer concert series. The first concert is Wednesday, June twentieth, which is the Wednesday before the last day of school kickoff the summer. So it's a children's concert with Ben Rudnick and friends. These are at the Abbey Griffin Park. And then they have weekly throughout the summer, and you should just definitely check it out, and they will end the summer also on a children's concert with Koliba. So it's an Afro-pop band. So it sounds like they're going to have a lot of robust programming, and I think our students will benefit greatly from enjoying what's right in their backyard. So and they actually were asked about the Gara Drive as well at the meeting, wanted to start on a high note, but they were very happy with the removal process for the tennis courts. And I know that we will be talking in the future still about the rest of the facilities. Right now, there's still a basketball court and a skate park, so we will be working on that, and we'll have more to discuss at the June fourth meeting. Here, I should say, not at Parks and Rec. Yes?
Just out of curiosity, who's the chair of that committee now?
For Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
Laura James.
Okay.
It was her first meeting when I went.
Okay, super.
Yes.
Of ten...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
The school bus stop committee, at the request of a parent, to examine the potential placing of the spot, and I believe we're deliberating it now.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Seeing none. Any public comments on the agenda items? We have one person from the public, but I don't even think he lives in town, so on that note, we're going to not let you count. How's that? We'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, made by me, if you have to, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. The motion carries four zero zero. Thank you and good night.